Ms. Schumacher, are we ready to start the meeting?
Mayor, we are.
Great. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are coming to you virtually tonight because Council members Bell, Branstadter, and myself are at the Association of Washington City's annual conference here in Spokane, Washington. But tonight is an important night, but we want to be here with all of you as well. So, welcome to the Lakewood City Council meeting for this Tuesday, June 20, 2023. And Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson has been excused. Councilmember Bell.
Present.
Councilmember Bokey.
Present.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Sella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whelan.
Present.
You have a quorum?
Very good. So, at this time, to be of best benefit to those members of the public appearing tonight in person in the audience, I will turn the gavel over to our Deputy Mayor, Mary Moss, and she will proceed with the meeting, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please join me in a moment of silence and Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. It's a bit challenging when we are at a distance, but we did it. So, we're going to start off with our public comments. And do I have the signing sheets?
The public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person public comment. Send comments in advance by mail or email to Brianna Schumacher, City Clerk, at 6000 Main Street Southwest, Lakewood, Washington, 98499, or bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to one hour before the meeting have been provided to the City Council electronically. The City Council received written comments in advance from Bruce Bodine and Gail and William Lehman. Those were provided in the City Council Agenda Packet, starting on page 116. Also, written comments were received in advance from James Chip Foley, Caesar Gat Button, Jeff Casman, Alex Legler, Christie Legler, Gail and William Lehman, Gail Lehman, Christina Minetti, Jean Mendenhall, Kathy Mendenhall, Jeff and Christie Merritt. Members of the audience may comment on items related to any matter of city business under the public comments period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Virtual comment, if you'd like to provide virtual comments, you may do so by joining the meeting via Zoom. Dial by telephone 253-215-8782, entering meeting ID 868-7263-2373. Press the star nine function to use the raise hand feature using a telephone keypad. If you're joining by Zoom, you can do so via the website zoom.us and entering the same meeting ID. Typically, the city will rotate between the first meeting and the third meeting of the month. So, this evening, we'll be calling on attendees via Zoom to provide comments in advance. Please also make note that we do have two public hearings this evening. One is on the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Amendments, as well as the Six Year 2024 through 2029 Transportation Improvement Program. If you have comments specific to those items, they need to be provided under the public hearings portion of the agenda in order to be included in that testimony. We'll go ahead and start now with those who have joined us via Zoom. The first person who has their hand raised is Dennis Houghgan.
Dennis Houghgan from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, previous resident of Lakewood. After watching the last meeting, I was trying to figure out what it is that you're trying to get across. I know it has something to do with the term "public education", but, you know, our forefathers felt that if there wasn't an educated public, we would have a hard time keeping this democracy working. There's something monolithic about the public education across the nation. It's almost like, under public education, there's a political party trying to take down the country. And when I'm watching what's going on there, I realize there's probably 11,000, 12,000 students. Gives us no idea, no idea whatsoever, what's happening with those students. And the 14 or 15 that you brought in, we don't know what kind of studies they're doing, nothing about grades or anything like that. So, it appeared to me to be a propaganda mission, but this is not new. This is becoming a kind of a standard, or what we're noticing is a standardized type of operation of this public education party. And parents across the nation are starting to, especially after COVID, are starting to rise up. And that's enlightening. They're starting to put the public education system, you know, against the wall. They want to know what's going on in the schools. In particular, they want to know that you're teaching math, reading, and writing, because that's absolutely unnecessary in a democracy. Look at some of the votes. Who would vote for a sanctuary, state or city? Who would invite people to break the law by coming, breaking into the country rather than going to the gate? And that's encouraged, and many things are encouraged. There's one group called, it's called Moms for Liberty. And they're going around and looking at schools and finding pornography in the libraries. You know, I don't know how much you feel. I don't know how much the school boards feel, but I think you probably should start aligning yourself with public, what the majority of the public thinks and feels about education. Thank you.
Next, the hand, the hand up that I see is Gail Lehman.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, my name is Gail Lehman, and I'm talking about an agenda item that is on for tonight. It's about an adoption of an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property under threat of condemnation or by condemnation for park and/or road purposes and authorizing payment. So, please be aware, that is what I'm speaking about. And I moved.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
If you want to be part of the record?
Yes.
She's okay? Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I moved to Lake Stillicum, to the then-named Ice Rink Cove area in 1956, when I was three years old. As an adult, I purchased a house on Lake Stillicum, and I now have a history approaching seven decades on this now-named Gate Rink Cove. We formally ask that the City of Lakewood not move forward on this condemnation proposal before the council this evening until the following issues have been formally answered and resolved. We formally ask that the City of Lakewood cease and desist any action on this agenda item until we and all other Lake Stillicum residents have sufficient time to provide input before any plans move forward. We formally request you read all letters received on this agenda item and give them the consideration they deserve before making your decision. Unresolved questions that need to be addressed and resolved. What is the status of the Edgewater Park Master Plan? What is the total cost of this project? Not only in the acquisition, 1.2-plus million dollars valued of the property, but the unidentified cost in pledging real estate values to the homes adjacent to and across this Gate Rink Cove from the park? And also, the increase in unattended, unintended, but ongoing negative issues related to drug use, crime, health, public safety, and property loss? Has an environmental impact statement been developed? What input has Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife given to the city's plan? And, by the way, wouldn't money be better spent on City of Lakewood mental health issues, homelessness, police protection, et cetera? My husband and I thank you for addressing my verbal comments now and my recent letters, our recent letters sent to Lakewood City Council, along with any other communications that are currently in your hands about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have. The syrup. Farmacus.
Hello, yeah, that's me. I'm Desiree Farmacus, I'm the Minister of Education of the Panther Party, and I am a Lakewood resident. And I would have some questions about the same ordinance that the last, the last speaker had some head-to-head questions about. Well, more, more of a statement, really. Here's the thing, is that, obviously, you know, there are questions that need to be addressed, right? We're talking about condemning land. It says it may be at risk of condemnation or something like that in the, on the agenda. I'm not quite sure what that means. I think we would all like to have that cleared up for us. But here's what it comes down to. I've stood in front of this, well, not stood, I've called in and on these, at these council meetings, over and over again, I've talked about how the needs of property shouldn't be put before the people, right? And what I say that, what I'm talking about is private property. I'm talking about factories. I'm talking about, I want to cut down trees to build a warehouse so that I can make money off of it, right? And what I hear is, you know, we have to respect people's property rights. Property rights are important. People bought that land for their own private use, right? And you care about that, right? You care about people's right to their property if it's making you money, right? That's what private property is. Now, if there's something different, that's personal property. Personal property is somebody's home, right? Somebody's car, somebody's, you know, toothbrush, right? The things that we all need, the things, the personal things that we own that allow us to live and operate in society, right? And again, like someone's home, right? And what you're talking about is, again, I don't know what "at risk of condemnation" means. To me, I'm pretty sure it means that you're pushing someone out of their home, taking their home away from them so that the developers can come in. And I'm sure you're buddy-buddy with these developers, because I know this whole council is corrupt, and we've talked about this over and over again, about all the deals that y'all do in the dark. So, maybe instead of taking people's homes, if you are so concerned about property rights, right? Let's put this money to better use and, and let these people keep their homes instead of doing what you're doing, which goes against not only common sense, but also your stated values. All power to the people.
So, that's all the hands that I see raised. Abdu Akitas Akudas. You're on.
My name's Ado Akotas, I'm the chairman of the Panther Party. I didn't know if I was going to speak tonight. It's been a little while since we've called in or been present. The reason I didn't know if I was going to talk is because I really like to have as much information as possible before doing so. And it was difficult to find out what exactly this money in Stillicum was going for and why this land was under the, as Doc said, quote, "threat of condemnation." It was odd. And I wanted to research more, but after listening to the people that have spoken, doesn't seem like anybody really knows what this thing is for. Other than, again, it's just my understanding, I'm not saying this is fact, but I've been told that somebody's house is getting taken away so that you guys can put in a little dock or something. Maybe I'm wrong about that. Like I said, I'll keep researching. But the question that is raised is why is it so difficult to find information on this? Why has this not been presented to the people before you guys decide to make a decision? There's some issues there. There's a long history that we have put into the spotlight of the people stepping forward and saying that something is a bad idea, and giving you guys plenty of examples as to why it's a bad idea. And it never really seems to matter. So, we decided to go a different route. But when we hear that somebody's losing their home so that y'all can pretty up a park for a very few people, from my understanding, that's a problem. So, I forget the lady's name, and I really apologize if you're still listening, but the woman that spoke earlier said, "Look, just put it on hold for now. Tell us what we need to know. Let us tell you what we think, and then y'all can make a decision." Now, while we've seen that that really doesn't matter, at least it will give you the chance to hear the people's voices. And isn't that what you're here to do, is listen to the people? So, I would recommend doing that. I'm proud of the people.
That's all the hands that I see raised at this time. Are there any others?
Deputy Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to our sign-up sheet. And the first one I have is Mr. Greg Horn.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Okay, my name is Greg Horn. I'm pretty much a lifelong resident of Stillicum Lake, and I'd like to come out 100% against the property condemnation of Dr. Mirajelli's property and against the unplanned development of Edgewater Park. I don't know what you guys are going to do. Here's a few facts that I came up with. In December 2008, Dr. Abraham Mirajelli and his wife bought it for $441,000. We could have bought it, you could have bought it, the city could have bought it, but they didn't. The Mirajellis bought it. They fixed up the house, it's rather beautiful, and it's their home. I don't think the city has any right to condemn a person's home just for the purpose of making a parking lot. They've done a beautiful job inside, I've visited several times, and I'm proud to have them as my neighbors. I heard that they, one of the reasons that they're condemning it is it's located on Silver Street, and that comes from an 1890 plat of the Clinton Area, Volume 5, page 94. And they're using a street that doesn't even exist anymore, apparently. There's a lot of opposition to improving the park. Improving it for who? The transients that come? I'm on the side of 320 homeowners that live on the lake, that take care of the property, that take care of the noise problems. All of the transients come out, raise hell on the lake, run around, and go home. And speaking of the park, years ago, one of the few things the city ever did for that park was they put Santa cans there for a very short time. And then they got vandalized, and the Santa cans went away. Well, guess what? People use that park all summer long. And where do you think they go to the bathroom? They have two choices, the lake or the bushes. The city doesn't even care enough to put Santa cans back. There are bullet holes in some of the houses across from the park, that's, that is absolutely verified. The ramp, the boat ramp is open 24 hours a day. I'd like to point out, nothing good happens after dark. People have had equipment and boats stolen, and the exit route is Edgewater Park. I don't want to see Stillicum Lake become a zoo like American Lake and Lake Taps. And that's what I'm really worried is going to happen. By the way, I'm a big supporter of user fees. I would like to see a $20 minimum boat launch fee. If you use the launch, pay for it. If you don't, don't have to pay. The total of Lake, my time's up. I just want to come out in support of Dr. Mirajelli and a planned development of the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tricia Pearson. Carson, sorry.
Can you guys hear me? Hi, Council. My name is Tricia Parsons. I'm a longtime resident of Lakewood and a current resident of Lake Stillicum. And I'm also in favor of backing what Gail and Greg have said. When the Edgewater Park expansion was brought to my attention, several things specifically came to my mind, and I'm here today to speak on those. As a citizen and a resident of the neighborhood that will be affected by this expansion, I want to share some thoughts I've been having. Number one, the lake is already severely polluted. Garbage can be seen floating in the lake on a daily basis, stemming from info from creeks, residence, and public access, including waste from people fishing. Who will maintain the cleanliness of the park on a regular basis when we currently have no city involvement cleaning the current waste in the lake? I'd argue that Lake Stillicum would be in the top running for dirtiest lake in this city. Edgewater Drive is a quiet and narrow residential road. How can this road handle any more traffic? How will replacing a residence in favor of a parking lot affect home values in that neighborhood, especially the house next door across the street? How will the expansion of parking lot affect surrounding wildlife habitats? I find Joni Mitchell's "Pay Paradise to Put Up a Parking Lot" an apt explanation of what seems to be the current plan here. Who will monitor the increase in boat ramp usage and regulate the size of boats accessing this small, shallow lake? There is a size limit of boat usage on Stillicum Lake currently that no one is monitoring, and more damage to habitat and property is caused by large boats and large wakes on the lake each and every year. In addition to the above, who will monitor safety on the lakes with the increase in usage? Police patrols one day during the summer will not cut it. How can we guarantee the safety of the public who will use the park and reduce unsavory behavior and crime, as seen in the past at Harry Todd Park? Has funding been considered for safety enforcement? This should be paramount. Some other funding we might consider instead in Lakewood? Cleaning up and converting the area around the Lakewood Mall into a park? Beefing up our police presence in those areas where crime and public drug use are high? More people access this area in Lakewood than this small park? Why aren't we concentrating our efforts here and to bring in retail and more spending? The mayor has been mentioning a splash park over the last few years. I think that would be a really useful benefit for a majority of our citizens, as opposed to this expansion. And then, like, overall, what we should focus our efforts on is our strong efforts to remove people who are damaging our city and our small businesses, prowling, mail theft, shoplifting, illegal dumping. I know the state is not helping us here, and I know that's the big hurdle. But how can we push back harder and stand for better? We need to do better for Lakewood. And then, on a separate note, I also want to mention that I am for the zoning that allows for the expansion of the Lakewood Racquet Club. The club is an asset to our city, and tennis and pickleball's positive effects on mental health should not be undervalued. Thank you very much for your time.
That's all the people that have signed up to speak in public comment, but that does not preclude you from speaking. If you would like to speak in public comment, please come forward.
I'm sorry I was late to put my name on the list. I'm Christina Minetti, I'm a Lakewood resident. I live in the neighborhood where Edgewater Park is. And I was completely shocked and then outraged to hear this was happening to a property owner in my neighborhood, to one of my neighbors. My husband has talked to him when he passes every day on his walks through the neighborhood. And although I know that there was a survey done some years ago, my family was not asked our opinions on the matter, even though we live a short distance away and pass the park every day on our walks. I realize that the city has commissioned a survey, and it shows that actually, much of the property belongs to the city anyway, but I would like to see other surveys before you condemn it. Having been told over and over again that property rights should not be infringed for the sake of tree preservation, I was taken aback to see that the City Council has no problem, however, to infringe on a private property owner's rights to make an unnecessary parking lot next to a residential lake. I imagine to myself how I would feel if I found out that my neighbor's house, which he loves and has lived in since a child in 1977, would be taken from his family for a complete and unnecessary and even ill-advised parking lot? Or my own house, or worse still, the house of my father, an immigrant who worked extremely hard for decades to earn the money to buy his house in healthcare, which of course is a major sign of an immigrant's success in this country. Coming from a family with ties to Eastern Europe, which is also my academic specialization, I can say that for people with a personal or family history of political repression, such an event would be especially devastating, and exactly the opposite of what we would have expected from our new and beloved adopted homeland, which we thought would protect us from government's egregious overreach and grasping hand. Condemning someone's house for a parking lot recalls the nationalization of property in Communist Eastern Europe after 1948, when the government took what it wanted, when it wanted, without regard, of course, to anyone's property rights. I'm talking about Czechoslovakia. I know that the concept of eminent domain exists, but it exists for far more critical and truly serious problems than how to solve parking for a tiny park so that more people can put their motorboats and jet skis into the water. Presumably, well, you'll have other problems, you'll have traffic problems and noise problems, and the other problems people already mentioned, an unmanned parking lot. And what about people who are going to park there, not only for the views, of course? What about the crime? And you're going to have the environmental problems of yet more impervious surfaces right next to a water body, no less. The parking lot and the paving, you know, for the walking path through the park, this tiny park, it's only one acre, right? So, you'll have more runoff, more toxic petroleum products going into the groundwater and right into Lake Stillicum, thank you very much, and the toxic salmon-killing 6PPD quinone, which you keep mentioning and nobody seems to care about. More concrete means more runoff, and we need less concrete, not more. Instead of these kinds of improvements, the city should easily just focus on making the park nicer as it is, so we can walk by it on our walks, enjoy it, have a little peace, put a bench, you know, so we can see the wildlife at least. Thank you very much.
As you approach the podium, please, list your name and the city.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, guys, my name is Parisa Mirajelli. I grew up at 9132 Edgewater Drive, the house that you guys are going to condemn. I spent my whole life growing up there, I made memories. It's my home. My parents, who are healthcare workers, my mom's a doctor, my dad is a dentist, they put their lives out on the line during COVID-19, and like, this is how you repay them by wanting to condemn their house. My dad, who's also an immigrant, who came here for a better life, put his heart and soul into building a home, and now you want to take it from him when he came here for that better life? My mom, who grew up in poverty, who built herself up, you want to take her home? Her home for what? For a parking lot? That's just going to, that's just going to drive in more crime? My home? Their work, their effort? It's criminal. I feel like what is being done to us is criminal. This house was built in 1957, over 60 years ago. For 60 years, you guys did nothing. You didn't say anything. But now you want to take it? You had 60, you had over 60 years to do this. Now, this, all of a sudden, the city says that they own this piece of land that this house is on, and you guys have spent over $40,000 on surveyors just to say that this is your land, when you could have said this over the past 60 years. But we have our own reputable surveyors, and they are willing to go to court to state that that is not true, and that really is not accurate, that that is your land. Um, and again, like, I, I really. Um, and again, like I, I really feel that me and my family is being targeted and discriminated against. And I beg you to not let this crime and this injustice continue on. Do better. Thank you.
I, my name is Dr. La Patosa, and I live at 9132 Edgewater Drive. And um, I just wanted to bring up a few issues. Um, recently, the city of Lakewood has said that um, that they own part of the land that the house is on. Which, we hired a surveyor and the surveyor is willing to go to court and said that, that we indeed do own that land. The house was built over 60 years ago. It's been bought and sold at least a dozen times. And it's odd now that the city of Lakewood is saying that now they own the land. They had 60 years to say they own the land. The reason I moved to Lakewood is to take a job at Western State Hospital to serve vulnerable patients. My grandmother was severely mentally ill, and I believe that those patients deserve good care too. So I came here uh, to serve as a doctor in that hospital at a much lower rate than other doctors get paid. But I, I believed in the mission there. I believed in serving those patients. And my husband and I came and we didn't have a lot of money. We bought the house at the foreclosure. We've spent thousands of hours fixing up this house with our own hands, hiring people. And being told that we have to get out and you're going to give us $250,000 for this house that we have spent so much money and so much time on. It's criminal. It's really criminal. And I think it's an awful way to be paid public servants. My husband works, again, as a dentist with mentally retarded patients uh, at near school. Uh, he again has sacrificed himself. Uh, he has not opened up his own office. We both believe in serving the public. And um, that's why we do and we work where we do. And um, I, I think this is just an awful thing to do.
Hello, everyone. My name is Abraham Mirjelili. Uh, I, me and my wife, and of course my daughter, we are the owner of this property at 9132. Uh, this issue have raised from due to the insecurity we had, and we decided to fence the part of the property that as county assessor was claiming to be ours before the Court of Tax Appeal repeatedly and put it in writing, and we have documents to prove it for at least a decade. And when we wrote to the city respectfully and told them about 90, about 60 911 calls that we had to make since we purchased this property and gave them the reason that maybe we could even a part of that park be purchased by us, uh, and so we could have a buffer zone. The endpoint has been that now they want to kick us out of there and give it to the people whom we had to call to 9114, obviously. This is, this is injustice. And, and, and let me please read something to you here. When in September 8 to 2021, uh, Heidi and Whitechir, the city attorney road, there appear to be two ways to, to resolve these issues presented by the encroachment. I let the encroachment to be discussed by our attorney. First, the city could file a quiet claim and ask the court to enforce the property boundary and acts and access damages. Alternatively, your client could apply for a road vacation of those parts of right of way to accommodate his encroachments. And additionally, the parties could negotiate the sale of the some portion of the uh, park. The, the city council must review both the proposed proposal roads and vacation. And that's what we did. But nobody bothered. What they gave us was this. Purchase price. Purchase price for the property shall be $250,000. I ask all of you respected in the neighbors of mine who are here. Any of you is willing to sell your property for $500,000 here? Any of you does, please raise your hand. Any of you is willing to sell it for a million dollars? Well.
Sir, please.
I'm sorry, but, but we need to put things in perspective. People who presented these to you did not serve you well. I am sorry. I am very sorry. The 2,000, the $250,000 which will be payable in cash at the closing, uh, at the, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Pizarro. I'm an attorney licensed here in the state of Washington. I reside in Burien in King County, not far from here. I represent Dr. Mirjelili. He's the owner of the property at 9132 Edgewater. I've been working with the city uh, on this issue for over two years. It's essentially a boundary line dispute between two neighbors. It so happens my client's neighbor is the city. Uh, there are multiple options that the city, the city through its council has considered. Uh, and there, those are options still available to the city today. Without getting too far into the specifics, there are alleged encroachments. Um, there are multiple surveyors, at least three surveyors, five attorneys. Now the city council, the public are involved uh, in a boundary line dispute. Uh, an issue of where to draw the line between two real properties. Despite all these professionals looking at it, spending days on it, years now, nobody can say where the line really is. Uh, and the result is that there's going to be a long court battle. It's going to be a quiet title dispute like any two neighbors fighting over where their boundary line is. That's going to be a protracted civil litigation dispute with the city. Um, and that's necessary before we can actually reach the issue of condemnation. I understand where the city here is today is making a decision about condemnation, about whether to proceed with that. But the preliminary issue, which is going to be resolved in court, is deciding and determining where the boundary line lays. Because without knowing where the boundary line is, the city doesn't know what it's going to be buying uh, from my client. There are multiple appraisals. Like I said, there's multiple surveys. Uh, the city and my client still don't see eye to eye even on the value of his property. Uh, we've got certified appraisers saying it's worth at least $1.7 million. We've got a certified appraisal saying it's worth over $2 million. In the event my client's successful, and we're certain he will be on the quiet title issue, the city is going to be paying millions of dollars to fully complete the condemnation that it's deciding to proceed with today. I want to be clear to the public and to the city of Lakewood that there are alternatives. There's four alleged encroachments. One of them is a deals with a right of way. The city has the option of vacating that right of way. One of them deals with waterfront property. Well, the other three really are parcels of property that can be sold to my client. We have offered, and the offer is still on the table, to pay the city for this land, to allow his family to keep their home that they've resided in for over a decade, uh, to keep their property. The city should follow through with that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is James Dunlop, and I'm a Lakewood resident. In 2016, uh, I came to the city council, to this hall. Um, I wanted, we wanted to give a talk, we wanted to protest about the destruction of a grove of oaks. This hall was packed. It was packed with traders who were working at the then flea market. And they had, I believe, been denied expansion to for parking space. And the city council, you know, respectfully listened to these traders. And they all went home. And the next week, they didn't come back, or the next two weeks, two weeks later, they didn't come back. They didn't get their parking space. And in the end, the flea market got closed down and it became a warehouse. So everyone here who's come to talk about Edgewater, you may be very pleased with yourself. But the city is just going to be saying, well, we're going to listen to them today. And they'll go away and they won't come back, and you probably won't come back. And that the property will get turned into a parking lot. If you want that property not to be turned into a parking lot, you have to come back in two weeks' time, two weeks' time after that, again and again and again. And you all have to speak. What you should be trying to do is make sure this, the city councillors go to, go home late. They miss their reality TV. That's what you've got to do. You've got to inconvenience them. We did this with the oak tree, with the oaks. We had some success. We did get an ad hoc tree committee. You have to make their life difficult. Because they don't care about you. They want you to go away. You know, and they're, they are empty, but you know, the, the real, the real people are not the, your elected representatives. It's the city bureaucrats. They're causing problems. You have to, you have to make their life hell.
Mr. Dunlap, please address the council.
I am addressing the council. I know you're not listening to me, but I'm just, I'm just advising people from my experience how best to get results. They have to turn, they have to keep you up, isn't that? I'm not allowed to address you. They have to keep going and they have to all talk. It's not enough for a few of you to talk. You all have to talk. Make them, make the city council meeting go on until 1:00 in the morning. Take your three minutes. You have to do it. Because if you don't do it, it shows you you're not fully committed. Anyway, that's my advice to you. If you want that, if you want that house not to be a parking lot, if you don't want it to be, you know, a drug dealing place, you know, because maybe the city take the view, they don't allow marijuana shops. So what they're going to do is allow all the drug dealing to happen in your um, in your parking lot, in that parking lot, or what's going to become a parking lot. So yeah, if you want, if you don't want it to happen, you've got to make their life hell.
Hello. I, I, I live across the street from Abraham, 9135 Edgewater Drive. My name is Johnny Tartt and my wife Kathy. Uh, we've lived in our house across the street from Abraham for 30 years. We've been residents of the state of, or the city of Lakewood before it was a city. Um, you know, we thought it was a good thing because we were under Pierce County jurisdiction at the time. And oftentimes the county doesn't look after our welfare as much as a city would. So we voted for cityhood. And um, a couple of years ago, maybe three, four years ago, there was a meeting at the lake with the homeowners, and they took a bunch of questions from us. And one of the questions I asked that group of people was um, regardless of what we, the homeowners say, I think the decisions are going to be made outside of what, what we, we say. And the thing is too, is um, as far as I remember, and I went to high school in Lakewood, my wife also did. And that was never considered a park. It was an easement to a road that people just walked up and down with their families or kids and their pets. You know, I made a couple of suggestions to try to curtail some of the speeding that goes up and down that street because we live there. We see it. Abraham sees everybody else that lives around that area sees it. You know, make it a one-way street. Put some street lights out there for these vagrants that hang out all night long doing whatever they do. Um, make it one way and everything else. I think still, like I said, I think regardless of what the homeowner said at the time, the decisions are going to be made outside of what we say or do. And we're the ones that have to see it, endure it. Um, it, it's going to devalue our property all for the sake of a parking lot? Is that really worth it? I think originally, all that land belonged to the homeowners. And my house is over 100 years old. And uh, um, if you look at the old maps from Pierce County, all that was part of the homeowners that lived there. So if you talk about easements and right of ways and all this stuff, I don't really know. I don't really care. All they say is just leave the people as they are, leave their neighbor or their yards the way they are. Um, take care of what's already there. You can call it whatever you want, but as far as I'm concerned, it's just an easement. People walk through there during the daytime, and there's people that hang out there at night. And there's no oversight other than the people that live there. They call the police, police don't respond because I'm sure they've got bigger problems out there to deal with. But you know, I just say, if you care about the people of Lakewood, then listen to what the people of Lakewood are saying. You know, we're not trying to cause conflict. We just want hostility in our neighborhoods and um, you know, live in, in peace, pay our taxes and do everything else that good citizens of Lakewood are supposed to do. So thanks.
Hello, my name is Casey Crook. I was born and raised here in Lakewood. I don't like getting up here to talk. Makes me nervous and anxious. I'm not very good at it. Um, I've, I'd like to echo what my neighbors are saying um, in terms of speaking truth to power and the expectations we have of them coming through for us, the people. Um, I've taken care of um, my mother, my grandmother, my whole life. I don't know anything about politics. I've been a family caregiver my whole life. My mom beat cancer uh, for 20 years and multiple sclerosis. I was her caregiver since I was a kid. Took care of my grandmother for almost seven years who had Alzheimer's. So I don't know what's going on with current affairs. I don't know about politics. I don't know about any of this stuff. But a year ago, um, they're shutting down our, our historic Lakewood Library, Tensler Building. And so I started learning about it and I started speaking um, at city council meetings and at the Pierce County Library System meetings. And what I've learned is that these people in power, what it seems like is that they, they have an agenda and they're going to do what they want to do. And everything is decided before it's brought to us until, before we even hear about it. Um, and there's little we can do. What Mr. Dunlap is saying about coming out here and speaking and putting um, pressure on and standing together as neighbors and having our voices be heard is very important to do. Um, I don't like to do it. It's uncomfortable, but it's necessary. Um, or else people in power, um, unelected bureaucrats, um, city, county, they're going to do what they want to do and not serve us. Um, so we've got to kind of stand together on that and put the pressure on. Thank you. That's all.
Hello, my name's Dan Zemanek. My wife, Chris, we're neighbors to Abraham. Uh, I'll make it quick. One of the things my parents taught me growing up, just because you can do something, doesn't mean you should do something. Thanks.
My name is Gene Minden Hall, and I've just found out that uh, the city of Lakewood is wanting to condemn the doctor's house to provide a park on, or parking lot on the lake. And I'm against it. I live directly across the lake from the boat ramp, and I have for 30 years. During this period of time, we have lost three paddle boats, a canoe and numerous water toys. It's a heist theft area. We have come home to people playing on the dock, swimming over during the day, thinking that they should use the dock. And this to a homeowner is a liability and not an asset. During the year, especially in the summer, we have numerous people that stay all night in the park with loud music and loud voices. There are no porta potties in the lake because the vandals and the drug users made them impossible to control. That has led people to using wherever to relieve themselves, including my neighbor's yard in the daylight. The private home you are considering for condemnation for a parking lot is a century for our safety. At the entry of the lagoon, a lagoon where the house is located, you can walk across the lake to the point where all the private homes are. In conclusion, removing the house and adding a parking lot will increase the theft in the area on the point. Nobody else is going to be involved. The people have, will have at that time a 24 hours. The people have, will have at that time a 24 hours locate, uh, location to camp out in, thus creating more noise and will not relieve the parking problems. The purpose of the parking lot will only add pollution to the lake from inclement, inclement, inclement weather from runoff into the lake, which is already a toxic problem. So as I see it as a taxpayer, I would rather have an aesthetic looking tax-producing home, which adds value and security to the neighborhood or rather than a parking lot that will produce no revenue and drain tax dollars requiring added resources to build and maintain our area. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Andrew Fights. I was not planning on speaking tonight. Everyone's done a really good job. I was supposed to address all of you. You all brought up all my concerns as far as being a homeowner on the lake, the dangers of it. All that aside, what I'm hearing tonight is a lack of community. My dad has a, John Fights was first pro temp judge for the city of Lakewood. He was very instrumental in getting us to be a city, to take care of our own. This community matters. We weren't getting our needs met before. I hope this council is hearing the people when they say, there's a family that's part of our community. There's 100 reasons why this is a bad idea, but it comes down to one reason. You're taking a home from a family in our community. It, it's, it shouldn't be, we shouldn't have to be up here speaking about this, let alone the money. The money could be used for better purposes. All of that aside, this is a community. This is full of people. You are here to serve the betterment of this community and taking a home from a family does not serve that purpose. I don't need the whole three minutes because I'm not a great speaker, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm Glenn Tolman. My wife Susan, we um, live over on American Lake. No offense, Greg. This is our first council meeting because we want to, you know, get involved with stuff going on. We went to the meet the chief over at the Silicon Park. Greg was there. I've met a few of you before. If this man Greg Horn is saying anything about the benefit of Silicon Lake, I believe every word that this man says over here. He is more committed to the preservation of Silicon Lake than any other person that I know. And if this man's been living in a house for as long as all these people are saying, and you're going to buy it from him for 250 grand and make a parking lot, I don't even really know where this house is. I do know where Mr. Horn lives. I have been to his house before. But this gentleman with his neighbors here, this is something that would happen in like the city of Tacoma. I live right over by Camp Murray. The action boat rental guy that used to be there. I can understand that you guys had, that was probably the state. You bought that because we got all the whole new freeway section there. So you tore the building down and you built the, uh, the new freeway. I don't think you're going to build a freeway down the street where these folks uh, live. So I hope you do the right thing, Mary. You guys, I, I think you should just being a total first time, you should walk away, take a step back, reevaluate your constituents. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak a public comment?
Hello, my name is Diane Bommel. I live on Lake Silicon. First of all, I want to commend you. I've noticed a ton more police presence in Lakewood. I appreciate that. But we have no police presence on our lake. Um, so I would want to suggest that the council concentrate on taking care of what is already there. I walk on that street. I've been stalked on that street. I've had to hide in bushes. I've had to wait 911 to call. I waited for over two hours. I had to beg somebody to let me in the house. So I beg you, don't spend any more money. Take care of what we have. I noticed that the park is all cleaned up and I found out that a youth group from a local church cleaned up the park that you're responsible for. That's all I have to say.
Hello, my name's Kurt Corbin. I live on Edgewater with my wife Leah. I just want to say that I'm against this also. Uh, my family, we go running down Edgewater and my kids have, unfortunately have witnessed several drug deals, people using drugs. They know what marijuana smells like now. Not really happy about that. Uh, I just hope that you guys will do the right thing and not take somebody's home. I mean, it's everybody's dream to own a part of America. And you know, these people saved up their money and they bought a house on the lake. And now you're going to try to tell them they have to leave for $250,000. This, I, I think you guys are, are smart people. I think you'll do the right thing, I hope. Okay? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zach Horn. I'm Greg Horn's son. Um, I appreciate you guys hearing what we have to say tonight. I think there's one thing that, as I think about this problem, that hasn't been said. There's over a half a dozen street end roads that go into Lake Silicon that have some type of access that the city owns. If you guys are willing to condemn a home because you have part of a property, I know quite a few of these homes actually still have those. There's some type of violation with property, I should say. So the question would be, at what point do you guys continue to take other people's zones? So I think it's a consideration for those of you on the lake to think about too. Thank you.
My name is Michael Kaligi. I'm a physician, local physician here, also working at Western State Hospital, serving the community with Dr. Le Petroso and Dr. Mirja Ledia. I know them for a long time. And I've been witness of purchasing this, this house was lousy looking. And they spend a lot of time and energy and then develop beautiful house. And they are public worker. They are helping the community. And this is not fair to destroy their house. Has a negative effect on mental physiological aspect of the family, especially this young kids grown up here. And it's going to be a lot of emotional, psychological problem on them. And we need to prevent that. Don't destroy the house. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak, please line up behind the speaker.
Hi, I'll keep my comments brief. I'm Chris Jackson, representing myself. My wife's at home with my two kids. I'm a 47-year resident of Lakewood and I'm 47 years old. So it tells you how long I've been here. Uh, my mom lives on the other side of Lake Silicon, just up the road. Um, the one thing I would say is, um, I think the city doesn't recognize, I don't necessarily think the council, maybe some of you recognize that the lake is taken care of by the residents. You know, much of the, the duties, if you will, including Greg, happen because you have residents that really care about the lake. And whether that's treatment of the lake via assessments, you know, things that are done to keep the lake beautified, if you will, in the way that we, best way we know how, that's all done. I have, I'm one of those adjacent property owners. I have a lake, um, a property that's owned by the city uh, next to my property. And this kind of shut, sent a shutter down my spine, to be honest. Because my wife and I stretched when we first bought our home in 2009. Um, and we moved in and we made improvements to the property. And to be quite honest, outside of an occasional call in to have a pothole filled at the end of our street, I take care of the city's property next to mine. Uh, I do that free of charge and I just think it's a tragedy, quite honestly, and a terrible thing and a terrible message to send to other property owners that for what seems like a very, you know, resolvable dispute with a property owner on the lake, something that I think if you sat down with two parties, the city and the resident that is there by the boat launch, that you can work this out. So I would just urge you to really give that some thought. Think about the message that is sent to the rest of the residents of the lake, the other 300 people who are, quite honestly, you know, paying quite a bit in property tax to live on the lake. And I think there should be a lot of consideration for that because that's what takes care of the lake. It's what takes care of a lot of things in Lakewood. And I just think that's, that's something we should really think about and I think the council should think about. Thank you.
Hi, I uh, uh, my name is Fernando Torres and unlike the good people in this room, many have lived here many, many years. Uh, I was able to have the opportunity to buy a home on Edgewater in 2018. It's beautiful. Um, the residents are beautiful. I, I, I walk that street and on the weekends when I get that opportunity and I see the trash cans overflowing and I don't know, debris left over from young people whoever party the night before. And, and I, and I'm, I'm listening to, to what's occurring with the condemnation of the home of my neighbor. I, I can't wrap my brain around it. It's, I don't know. It's, it's a nightmare for him. And but more important is, is why, why this expansion? If you can't maintain, and please, I don't mean to knock the parks and recreation people that do, that do their jobs. That's not my intent. But, but when you don't have staff and there is no budget and a simple thing like a trash can can't be maintained and emptied on a regular basis, how on earth are you going to manage an expansion like you, what you described? I also Googled, um, you know, city of Lakewood, um, Edgewater Park expansion. And there's just a couple of paragraphs. The description says it was a master plan. I didn't see the master plan. I didn't, couldn't find it. And I'm watching, I'm watching all of you. I'm watching your reaction to the people that are talking. Are you listening? Do you hear them? I wonder because I don't know. I don't know. It's almost as though you're a jury and you guys decide. And in my opinion, it's already been decided. If you look at the information, this is a done deal. It's not a question of if no longer. It's when. Yeah, I appreciate you hearing me out, but please listen. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Heidi Smith and I also live on Silicon Lake. My husband Ernie. Um, our lake is pretty unique. So I am on the other end of the lake, uh, just after you go under the bridge from the Edgewater area. And what I, so sorry to hear about what's happening. And I can only imagine the stress that that has been on your family. Um, my concern has to do with the safety of our kids. So when there are people on the lake, it's very clear who lives there and knows the lake versus who doesn't. So you can tell the way that they're driving their boats. You can tell how close they get to our shorelines, how loud they are, the garbage that's left behind. Um, I'm just on the other side of the lake, so there's a bit of a blind spot as people come through the lake or through the bridge there. Um, I often have my daughter and her friends out swimming. She's getting old enough now that we can be out on our paddle boards and our kayaks. And I am very concerned about increased boat traffic on that lake, especially for folks who are just coming to party and have a good time and make a mess and leave their trash. And I just would like to speak up and say that we are also against having a parking lot put there. There are better uses for the money as other people have already indicated. And we would really appreciate you taking into account all the children that live on that lake and grow up there and feel safe being there and swimming in front of their homes and not having additional boat traffic and visitors uh, who would not necessarily be as respectful of our families as the people that live there. And most of us are getting to know each other. So thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak a public comment? If not, I'm going to say that this is not a period where we dialogue. We do listen. We hear you. We appreciate you coming. And I'm going to declare a public comment closed. And moving on, we're going to have consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of May 31st, 2023. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of June 5th, 2023. C, motion number 2023-62, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the interlocal agreement with the town of Silicon for court services. D, motion number 2023-63, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the interlocal agreement with the city of Dupont for court services. E, motion number 2023-64, appointing Tristan Lauricella to serve as representative and Mike Branstadter as alternate on the Pierce County Opioid Abatement Council, OAC. F, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, public safety advisory committee meeting minutes of April 5th, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I move approval of the consent agenda. Seconded.
It has been approved by
Second.
Approved by Councilmember Bokey and seconded by Councilmember LaRocella. So thank you. And our regular agenda. Okay. Are there any questions or discussion?
You want to bring up on the consent agenda?
Can I get a motion for approval? Yeah.
Yep, approved and seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What are we doing? Voting on the consent agenda.
Mayor, consent agenda has been moved by Councilmember Bokey, seconded by Councilmember Lauricella. Um, at this point, we're looking for a vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Thank you. And the consent agenda is approved. Okay, at this point, at this time, we're going to hear from a public hearing and appeals. And I call for Ted Hill, Capitol Project Manager.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the six-year 2024 through 2029 transportation improvement program.
Good evening, Mayor. Deputy Mayor Ross, counsel. The city is pursuing its six-year concert, comprehensive transportation improvement program, or the six-year tip. Updating the program is an annual process required by state statute, meant to assure combined consistency with comprehensive plans, goals, and to evaluate current transportation needs. The public hearing tonight is an important part of the process, affording the public an opportunity to comment on the program prior to its adoption. The final draft of the 2024 through 2029 TIP was developed over the past few months. It outlines over $139 million in transportation-related capital projects and the city's needs to pursue over the next six years and beyond. The program does not include routine operation maintenance activities or WASH dot led projects. These functions are taken care of outside of the TIP. The six-year TIP is a planning-level document, and as such, the program is not fiscally balanced with respect to the current and anticipated city revenues. Implementation of the TIP occurs through the city's biennial budget and the capital improvement program process. Recent grant awards have helped to maintain a healthy capital improvement program, hence this year and 16 projects going out the door. Projects must be included in the city's current TIP in order to be eligible to receive most of the transportation-related grants that we go after. This draft program was presented to council last week, June 12th, study session. In addition, the document will be available on the city's website, and a request for comment will be made available through social media. Any comments received through tonight's public hearing will be reviewed and evaluated by the staff. Any required modifications can be incorporated into the final six-year TIP, which currently is scheduled for adoption on July 3rd. We look forward to receiving any comments.
So the city clerk, have we received any?
Deputy Mayor, we received no public testimony in advance of this evening's public hearing.
Thank you. Testimony is limited to three minutes per person. You can be virtual. And if you would like to provide a virtual, live virtual testimony, you will need to join the Zoom meeting. The ID is, the telephone ID and number and ID is on, on your screen. You dial 253-215-87282, or enter the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373. Press star nine to use the raise hand feature. And the Zoom is, is linked to there. So we start with the, uh, Zoom, people on Zoom. And the hand that I see raised is Dennis Haugen. Speaking to the tip.
Look, a tip is a required necessity in order to get certain grants. I really feel sorry for you because the grants probably aren't going to do you that much good as far as improving the lifestyle of Lakewood. You've got a thing hanging over your head. It's called illegal immigration by the thousands. And now the big cities are starting to push the illegal immigrants out into the suburbs.
Mr. Haugen?
Yeah, isn't that about the tip?
This is a public hearing on the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, isn't, isn't there a requirement to have the comprehensive plan passed so that you can get federal money?
The transportation improvement plan, yes.
Okay, okay, so it's relevant then, right?
No, it's not.
Um, madam.
Okay, okay.
To be clear, Madam Mayor, the topic that's before the council at this time is the six-year Transportation Improvement Program. Comments germane to that topic are on point.
Thank you.
So what did you decide? Can I speak?
No.
No?
On the tip, on the tip.
Yeah. Isn't the tip about money?
No, it's not.
It's not about money. Okay, okay, I totally misunderstood. I didn't, I didn't realize that. I apologize. I didn't realize that tip had anything to do with grants, which are money. Anyway, so, thank you.
Is there anyone else, other hands held, raised?
Deputy Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Thank you. And at this time, some of you may have already spoken, but if I call your name and you don't choose to speak on this topic, I understand you signed in on the wrong sheet. So the first person that I have is Terry Wright. You already spoke. And Abraham Mitchum. Did you want to speak again? On the, you have to speak to the tip. To the Transportation Improvement Plan. Okay, all right, yeah. Yeah. We just have the names on the we just signed up on the wrong sheets. That's what happened, so, no problem. Susan Tillman, I think you spoke earlier as well. Sue Stabi? And Mr. Torres. If anyone else wants to speak to the comprehensive plan tip, please move forward. Yes. Transportation.
If anyone else would like to speak as it relates to the 2024 to 2029 Transportation Improvement Plan, please step forward to the podium.
Okay, seeing none?
We'll declare the public hearing closed at 8:17 PM.
Public, public comments closed. And the next one is?
This is the date set for a public hearing on the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Amendments.
And I'd like to call on Strategic Planning Manager Tiffany Spears, who will be joining us virtually.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Deputy Mayor and members of the council. Tiffany Spear, Longreach Strategic Planning Manager for the city of Lakewood. First of all, I'd just like to clarify that tonight's public hearing is for the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Amendments, not for the 2024 Periodic Review Amendments. Those are still a year out for a public hearing. So this is for nine amendments that have been under consideration at the Planning Commission and then the city council here this spring. And I will share my screen for a very brief introduction. So there are a total of nine amendments. These were incorporated into a resolution last fall by the city council to approve. And then, as I just mentioned, they have been moving their way through the Planning Commission and then now to the city council this spring. Very quickly, the first is to continue the implementation of the tree code that was adopted last fall by city council. This adds a tree canopy goal citywide of 40% by the year 2050. The second is a rezone of three parcels, or excuse me, six parcels in an area immediately adjacent to the downtown subarea to Central Business District. The third is to rezone three parcels to open space Recreation Two. The fourth is to rezone parcels in an area near the current Lhasa operations for the Gravi Lake Commons Phase Three and Four project to Neighborhood Commercial Two. The fifth is to respond to state requirements in House Bill 1220 to allow emergency housing and emergency shelter in zones that have hotels and motels and potentially other areas as well. And then also allowing permanent supportive housing and transitional housing in any zones where residential dwelling units or hotels are allowed, as well as foster care facilities, and then removing concomitant agreements from portions of city codes simply because they are obsolete. The Sixth Amendment amends, uh, policy land use 5.3 to allow, uh, new and additional types of funding for relocation services provided to people displaced as a result of construction and development projects. Amendment seven is to redesignate one parcel already owned by the city to be incorporated into Ward's Lake Park. The eighth is to update the comprehensive plan text and policies and maps to reflect the adoption of the master plan for the Western State Hospital complex. And the final amendment is to remove language within land use policy 2.25 that a property owner has to occupy either a primary or secondary unit when there is an accessory dwelling unit. So with that, I turn it back to you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Again, the public testimony on the public hearing is accepted by mail, email or by virtual or in-person comments. You can send your testimonies in advance by mail or email to Brianna Shoemaker, city clerk at 6,000 Main Street, Southwest, in Lakewood, Washington. The clerk, are there any names that have presented and requested?
Deputy Mayor, we received written comments in advance of this evening's meeting from Terry Wright on behalf of the Lakewood Racket Club, Christina Medetti and the Gary Oak Coalition.
Thank you. I'm going to ask if, okay. Testimony is limited to three minutes per person.
Good evening. You already have a clock of my written, oh.
I don't have.
I thought she did. Okay.
Yeah. Do we, there's no hands raised? Oh, there is now.
Our first virtual hand raised is Dennis Haugen.
In your amendments, it was mentioned emergency housing. But also in your amendments, does it matter whether a person is a legal residence of the United States in order to attain this emergency housing? Does it require any rules or should be taken out of emergency housing if they sell ethanol or any other kind of drugs? Those are questions that I think you should seriously consider if it's not in there somewhere. Because you've got a flow coming out of the border like you can't believe. Thousands of people, crowds coming in, being shipped all over the United States. And with all this welcoming, of course, you're likely to get a lot of them. Anyway, thank you.
The next person with the hand up is Kim.
Hello, um, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the time, distinguished counsel. I, after listening to last week's study session, both Mayor Wayland and Councilman Bokey brought up a very interesting issue of which I support in the comp plan, the overlay of the, which would include housing in the Oak Brook area. I agree with, uh, both of the gentlemen stating that there's no need to jump into this. I think this, this is an area that needs to be carefully thought out. I personally live along Pacific Highway South in the Ponder's area. And we have several, um, community homes that have been rentals that have been taken over in the area. And the neighborhood has just gone south. I understand that the grocery outlet, the old GovMart, tells you how long I've been here, um, used to, or is, is being converted or planned for low-income housing. As Portland is learning, or has learned, I should say, and California and many other communities, we don't have a housing issue. We have a drug addiction issue that needs to be addressed. My concern is, much like the Tacoma Rescue Mission is having right now, they don't have funds. Where are the vouchers going to come from? Where are we going to get the money as taxpayers to support this housing? I think that this needs to be carefully thought out. A commercial developer who lives on Lake Silicon recently told me we don't need more freeway blight. What we need is, um, we need transitional housing, yes, but put it in an area that welcomes people into our community. There are plenty of areas, uh, it would be east of, of Bridgeport Way. There's a, there's a full area through there that is low income now that has plenty of space to, for apartment complexes along the, between there and the tracks. I speak from experience when I say that you need to be careful with this transitional housing and what it does to a, a community in a neighborhood. When we moved in here in the, in the seventies, and granted, it was a long time ago, they used to call this millionaire drive. And now nobody wants to live here. We have, of course, a train traffic. But just be really, really careful when you're expanding areas. I don't think that this, um, present comp plan as being presented with additional open, opening up additional areas to extend for low-income housing, I question the money and I question presentation. Thank you.
Kim, would you please announce your last name for the record?
Underwood, and I, I'm, I'm a 47-year-old Lakewood resident.
Thank you. Are there any other raised hands?
Deputy Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Okay, at this time, we'll go into, um, those local or in-house. And I'm going to ask you, since everybody signed up on the same sheet, I don't know who did what. So if you signed up to speak to the city of Lakewood's amendment of the six-year comprehensive plan, please follow the speaker.
Good evening. My name is Terry Wright. I'm current president of the Lakewood Racket Club. We were provided some questions by Tiffany Spear that wanted information about the club's accessibility and use by non-members in part of your consideration and our zoning request. So I have provided those in writing. I'm going to just highlight a couple of them. You can, can read them on your own. Um, there's a summer junior program that brings in 40 to 60 kids each summer. They're starting last week. Most of those are non-members. So these are local junior high and high school kids that are being exposed to tennis and improving their tennis on a regular basis. We have a year-round indoor program, but it's highly restricted because we only have four indoor courts. That is really the reason why we are trying to expand an additional six courts is to be able to build a long-term junior program that would support 40 to 60 kids. There's a few other things in here that are relevant that Lakewood Racket Club provides. And we have a junior tennis tournaments four or five times a year that bring in 60 to 100 kids. And those are weekend tournaments. They're non-local kids. They bring in their parents. They rent hotels, they eat food, they do all that kind of stuff. So it's a, it's a benefit to Lakewood as well as to Lakewood Racket Club in, in that regard. We have, in the last couple of years, along with the nationwide surge, I guess, started opening up the club to pickleball by non-members. And so there are scheduled times, four or five a week, something like that, where we open up the courts for pickleball play by non-members. They come in and pay a five or $7 fee or something like that and, and get to play. We offer summer memberships to non-members that are able to use the full facilities, the pool, our lounge and everything else. We rent out our lounge. Uh, I want a couple of comments real quick about the rezoning proposal itself. And I want to thank And I wanna thank Tiffany right up front for all the hard work that she has done on this program. It's, it's been a very tenuous push and shove back and forth, trying to figure out where the club actually fits in a zoning. We don't really fit anything. Tennis courts by nature are very tall and very big. And so it doesn't really fit in the residential zoning capabilities. They thought originally that it should fit in an NC two, a commercial category. Seems to have all the attributes we needed, but somebody was afraid that they'd get sold in some point in the future. In conclusion, I guess, it, it's just that Lakewood Bracket Club is requesting that the initially proposed classification of NC two be what you finally adopt when you make that change. And that's different than what is in front of you. And I just wanted to highlight that as being very important. Thank you.
Thank you. You state your name and place of residence, please.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor. My name is Matthew Sweeney. I'm a Tacoma attorney. I was uh, commenting on twenty twenty-three dash zero-two. This was a amendment to the uh, Business District expansion right up here to include these parcels up here. It's gone up and down. You've seen it before and the Planning Commission saw it a couple of times. My client is Claude Ramay, who owns a couple or three of those parcels up there. You can see it's pretty ripe for redevelopment and the, the Development Regulations found in the Central Business District really do encourage that, that type of redevelopment. And that was kind of the purpose for our inclusion. The Planning Council Commission went back and forth with it and then expanded it big and then contracted it back the way, the way it was originally done and stuff. So we've seen some variations and permutations, but on balance, I think we have staff support. And the Planning Commission felt comfortable um, going forward with the, with the redesignation. And we really appreciate your attention and consideration for that. And plus, it's good to come down every three or four months or so to see if Dave's still sitting here. And so Dave was saying, one of these days I may not be here. And I said, well, Dave, one of these days I might not be here. So he said, take your shot now. And I said, oh, it's cruelty to old people. We can't do that. So I do appreciate your attention and, and uh, the years that Dave and I have been working in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else choosing to speak? Mr. Kaufman? Chris Kaufman?
I'm Chris Kaufman. I live at six-six-two-seven Health Hop Lane. And uh, I have had an interest over uh, I guess, the fifty years that I've over lived in the Lakewood area on the comprehensive plans that we have had. And uh, with regard to this most recent proposal, uh, I think Don Daniels and his group have done a very deliberate and a thoughtful review of the nine proposals. And they're recommending to the City Council, the adoption of seven of those proposals that are noted here. And uh, I strongly support those, particularly regard to changing the language um, on the ADU. Proposal. I never did quite understand uh, the original language, which uh, is proposed to be removed with regard to the requirement that a property owner occupy either the primary or the secondary unit when there is an accessory dwelling unit. With that, I, I also was glad to see a lot of fellow Lakewood members here to see how the City Council works. And uh, that's, it's nice, nice to see the public involvement. Thank you.
Okay. If you are here to, to testify to this amendment of the six-year comprehensive plan, please step forward.
Deputy Mayor, just to be clear, we're having the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-three comprehensive plan amendment. So if there's others who would like to approach the podium to talk about the twenty-twenty-three comprehensive plan amendments?
Seeing none, I would declare the public comment closed. And, and on our agenda next is ordinance seven eighty-seven, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number seven eighty-seven, authorizing the acquisition of real property under threat of condemnation or by condemnation for park and or road purposes, authorizing payment thereof from the city's general fund or from such monies other that the city may have available or attain for the acquisition, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. For this, we have City Attorney Heidi Walker.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Wayland, by virtual attendance. Deputy Mayor Moss and members of the council, and I know both Councilmember Bell and Councilmember Brands that are in attendance as well. I'm Heidi Walker, the City Attorney for the City of Lakewood, and I'm here to speak on this matter. This is in order to further the city's six-year capital improvement plan tied to the park's legacy plan. And the projects include the enlargement and improvement of Edgewater Park and improvement of the roads serving the park. It's currently bounded by residential homes. And this particular parcel that's up on the screen at this time, as you can see, but for the residents that's currently there, the city would actually own um, the aqua, the yellow, the pink and the purple. It's not one encroachment. It's actually a collection of encroachments, including a state park parcel that is adjacent to the lake. So um, we have been working at this for a while and it is currently the recommendation that we do a condemnation procedure in order to acquire the property. As indicated in the briefing that I provided for the council, the one point two million dollar appraisal is including, that's assuming that those parcels did not belong to other than the homeowner. If you take those parcels away, it's our estimation that the one point two million would be substantially less. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions at this time. I will also introduce you to Kenan Williams of Foster Garvey. He has been online and is our attorney in these matters in terms of the specific negotiation and litigation.
Are there any questions for our attorney?
Yes.
Councilmember Bokey and then?
Ms., Ms. Walker. And then the mayor.
Yes.
Yeah. Are you at liberty to discuss negotiations today?
I hesitate to say what I would normally say. I think you know, because I've been working for the city for twenty years, I'm a bit flip and colorful and it doesn't go over well. And so I will tell you, when somebody testifies in public comment that we've been at this for two years, I think it's safe to say there's been negotiation ongoing. And Mr. Williams, and I think he will echo me after I finish saying this, will tell you that we are neither going to litigate nor negotiate this case in a city council meeting.
So are you at liberty to say approximately how many meetings you may have had?
I would have to speculate as to meetings held between Mr. Williams, Ms. McCain of our office and myself in order to give you that. So it would require speculation, but I think the two-year estimate is solid. And I have personally attended some of those meetings.
That's all I've got for now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, can you hear me all right?
I can.
You can?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Ms. Walker, there has been public comments swirling about that is misleading about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar offer for the entire property. Can you explain uh, why that's misleading?
There's a constitutional prohibition against a gifting of public funds and it is a constitutional defect. And so based on that problem, we cannot compensate someone for land that they cannot adversely possess and do not own. And I would welcome Mr. Williams to weigh in, considering his expertise in this area.
What I want to clarify though is the city has not offered, as I understand it, and I don't want to get into all the negotiations, and Mr. Williams has been engaged in, but there is no offer to buy the entirety of the house for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, correct?
I would have to check. I think if there was such an offer, that's going back pretty far. It sounds like they were reading from a specific letter. And I, I don't know if that was the specific amount that may have been offered at some point. What I can tell you is we cannot offer for a house that is halfway into city property. The, the difference in opinions on this is what is a house worth if the person actually owns the property versus what is a house worth if it's built halfway into property the person cannot own without purchasing? Mr. Williams, I would defer to you.
Yes, so if you look at the map, you can see the areas that are actually owned by the city. Okay, and I, I want to clarify.
Yeah, I'm freezing, freezing.
Okay. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to clarify.
I can hear you.
Okay, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. A statement was made that the, they have a survey that will show that they're not, in fact, encroaching on city property, and that is not true. I've seen all of the surveys and it isn't a question of whether there's an encroachment. It's a question of how much they are encroaching. And without necessarily going into the details, uh, we had reached an understanding that the survey that was completed by the Byler Group uh, was in fact the correct survey, which indicates that approximately a third of the residence itself, the structure, is located in city-owned property. Essentially, the entire front driveway area and front yard is located in city right-of-way. That consideration has to go in when you measure the value of the property. I would also indicate.
Back up.
Mr. Mayor, did you have a comment? I think he.
The Zoom connection is crap, so he's gonna have to back up and repeat what he said to me.
Okay. I will, go ahead. Again. There are two surveys that have been completed. The quote, third survey is the survey that we went back to confirm things again because of the, the difference. Both, all this, I should say, all of the surveys indicate that there are significant encroachments by structures that are owned by the Mirahollies into city right-of-way, which means city property that the citizens own. It is not for you necessarily to give, quote, give away. The offer, any offer was made based on the fact that the bulk of the property, the valuable property running along the lake is owned by the city, which is part of the plat, in the original plat, it was designated as state parkland. When we look at that and measure that against the values, an estimate and an offer was made, and I will leave it at that because they have disclosed that. If in fact, the, we believe that their appraisal is incorrect, which I do not agree with, the fact still remains that that values the entire property, the bulk of the value of which lies in the state, in the city-owned property, which was formerly designated in one of the original plats as a state park. The problem that we're left with, unfortunately for the Mirahollies, is that they have a piece of property that is unmarketable at this time. And I will tell you that you cannot adversely possess the city property. I just had a case in, in the Court of Appeals about an issue, issue like that, where I provided uh, an amicus brief. And the decision was based on the amicus brief, and it is rare to have the Court of Appeals call out an amicus and say that the, that the information that we provided and the issue that we briefed was determinative of, of the issue, but in fact, that was the case. So that, that's where we are. That's why we are not paying for the entire structure. We're paying for the value of the structure that is not located within city right-of-way.
So I, I've turned my camera off to enhance the internet connection, as I'm told that that might be better. So, Mr. Williams, I want to also ask just how long have you been in contact with the homeowners and working through this issue? It's been at least a year or two, correct?
Y-yes, I, I was brought in just initially as an advisor quite some time ago, and I have actively been working in it at least nine months myself. Prior to that, I was working as a consultant on the issue, and that was, that's been, yeah, close to a couple of years, somewhere around there. I'd have to check my actual time.
Any other questions, comments?
So also explain a little bit about this process, should the council elect to move forward with a particular ordinance on the table? Or it still uh, opens the door for, for the negotiation and discussion, correct?
Mr. Williams, I'll answer this because I know the history of this council with condemnation. First, this council doesn't enter condemnation lightly. And second, they prefer that we work with our citizens, and you've expressed that at every turn, in every case that I've handled in twenty years here. And so it is understood that if we reach some kind of an agreement, short of the active, deaction in litigation, we would do that. To my knowledge, I don't know that we've ever completely had to go through the whole process historically as a city.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
We have a question. It may not be suitable for Ms. Walker, but she may know a bit. There's been some discussion about the master plan, to the extent you know. Isn't it correct that Edgewater Park has been part of the master plan process for the park's legacy plan for some years?
That is correct, Mayor Wayland. I would tell you that the degree of detail is being further drafted, but it has always been present as an element.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from? So, uh, may I have a motion to approve ordinance number seven eighty-seven?
I move ordinance number seven eight seven.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Bokey and second by Councilmember Tarcello. All in favor?
We're gonna deliberate.
Yeah, can we have a discussion?
Well, wait, there's discussion.
Yeah.
Right.
Mayor Wayland?
Yes, I, I want to speak to this motion and to the members of the audience, the public, and certainly many of my neighbors who are there. And I speak to you with my camera off because the darn video is not great. I'll try it on. I'm the only council member that lives on Lake Silicon. I understand many of the issues of which you speak. I too have been a victim of people stealing paddle boards off my dock. My property is right around the corner from this house, adjacent up from the horns and a couple docks down from the corbs. So I understand the issues and the concerns about improvement of Edgewater Park. I also speak though, as one who has heard much in the course of our, my, this is now my thirteenth year in the council, about making our lakes more accessible to the public and not just to those of us who are fortunate enough to live on the lakes, of which I am also one of you, fortunate enough to live on one of our lakes, including Lake Silicon. Edgewater Park has long been the only access to Lake Silicon for those who wish to boat or fish or recreate. And I too have been concerned about fisher folks coming, you know, near the, the docks and creating issues along our property. However, the public deserves access to the lake. We have improved access in, on American Lake via Harry Todd Park. uh, via Harry Todd Park and American Lake Park, Bradley Lake, for all the reasons you know. Those of you who have been through the street ends process knows it's problematic. Edgewater Park exists, and I am a bit dismayed when I hear the shock about the master planning process for the improvement of Edgewater Park. Been part of Lakewood's master plan for the Parks and Recreation Department for years. There is a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that has been working on this for years. Now, the details of exactly the improvements to be made, they're in, in the process of being fleshed out, but it's always been a part and parcel to improvements to ensure that the public has adequate and fair access to the water on that body of water at Edgewater Park. We view the delivery municipal services to the lens of, of some equity, and that includes making sure that bodies of water that have equitable access, uh, i- it's provided. And so this is an area that has long been a problem. Parking has been an issue. We have heard complaints from many a neighbor about parking and access to the boat ramp and the impacts and problems at the boat ramp with regard to stumps or any number of things. I too have experienced that. I do hear the comments that if we're going to have something, we need to maintain it. And I can tell you, it'll be my intention to make sure that whatever we do on Edgewater Park is going to be properly maintained and policed, because I agree that we can't create issues or more problems for the adjacent neighbors, including my own family. I'm concerned when I hear that we don't ca, take care of what we have, and we're going to address that to the extent there are issues down at Edgewater Park currently, and, uh, we're gonna make sure that that's taken care of. But with regard to this issue, this has been something that we have been working on for a couple of years, and as you've heard from council for the city, without much success, notwithstanding the issue of significant title encroachments that have existed not for 60 years of Lakewood, because Lakewood's only been incorporated since 1996. For, for a long period of time, Lakewood inherited this issue from Pierce County. And now we have to deal with it as best we can for the betterment of all residents. So I want to provide those clarifying comments, uh, given my own personal interest in making sure that the lake is safe, that our neighbors aren't unduly impacted, but we also provide adequate access to all residents, to bodies of water to which they're entitled to access.
Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would echo the mayor's comments that in the 12-plus years that I've been on the council, a recurrent theme from many sources in the community and multiple times on surveys and public meetings has been lamentation about the lack of access from many in the public to lakes, despite the fact that Lakewood has a significant number of them, but that when we were under county jurisdiction, in fact, access to some of the lakes was actually curtailed. And we've been working on ways to do that, that Edgewater Park is a city-owned piece of property, as narrow hence, as it is and linear as it is, has always been studied, is how can we make that a better amenity for the community? And the Ben, we've not made as much progress because we just need a little bit more space. And when it came to light that city-owned space was actually available on this parcel that this ordinance addresses, uh, to include the fact that one of the problems that restrictions on parking was that this parcel had encroached on the right-of-way to where there would have been parking along the road for a few more vehicles, uh, and that there would have been some additional shoreline available to the, to the public that could be both enjoyed but also preserved, uh, that we're looking to do that. And in the two-plus years that we've been discussing, how do we resolve the complicated matter of the ownership pattern on this property? Uh, it's been reported to us indirectly that, uh, the property owner has been not forthcoming with being willing to make any resolution of it. And that it looks like, as the attorney that spoke in public comments said, there are some issues that have to get resolved in court. Well, passing this condemnation ordinance is a method to expedite getting the matter in front of a judge to get some resolution of things and for things to be there. Uh, I, I'm not quite sure where the, the entire property becoming a parking lot uh, mindset, you know, it came, came to be understood. Uh, that's never been my discussions about that. We've discussed the fact that this property could have a myriad of uses that would enhance the park, that would include some parking particularly along where there's right-of-way along the road. So I, I'm supporting moving this as forward as a way to more quickly get a resolution and to open the way with some definite certainty as to a finalized master plan for Edgewater Park, knowing exactly what real estate is, can be incorporated into the park to be developed. Uh, and going on, some of the issues that are resolved can be helped by such as the fact that the property here is closer to some sewer lines and would be able to perhaps facilitate uh, better restroom facilities and, and some other things. I am a occasional user of Edgewater Park because I'm a kayaker. And it's a place, if I want to kayak on Lake Stilicum, that I can put a, put a kayak in, even if I have to then move my, my truck a block away to park it after I drop my kayak off. Um, I think that there are a great variety of uses that water allows. Um, and there's a, uh, I think the, the mayor's comments about looking at how we develop our, our access to, to our water amenities with an equity lens is appropriate. Uh, and that, uh, it seems that resolving the ownership of this property or the portions of the property uh, is necessary in order to actually make some definitive final actions to improve Edgewater Park, and I'm gonna be supportive of the ordinance.
Mr. Tarcello.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, wow, lots of people came in and spoke. This is really good. I wish we could get this many people when we have parks cleanup days, right? Getting folks out there to, to make things nice. Uh, see this as two separate issues. One, the development of our parks to make them accessible for folks. Uh, I appreciate that we have, you know, 100-plus people who came here to speak out about access to the lake, but there's 61,000 other residents of our city who have equal rights and access to these lakes, so I want to make sure that they're represented as well. Uh, in terms of the condemnation notice, uh, it is not in our best interest to kick people out of their homes, but at the same time, we need to work to find some sort of compromise that addresses the issues of property that was purchased that was not within the survey lines that were allowed initially. So, I see the approval of this ordinance as a tool towards reaching a resolution, not necessarily going immediately to condemnation and eviction, but enabling, uh, our folks within, uh, the city to have that as an option as we go through negotiations. Uh, because of that, I will be voting to approve it. Thank you.
Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss. Um, yeah, I, I agree with Councilmember Branstadter's comments. I, I, you, you look at the map in our packet at, uh, page 114, and you, you see a, an issue that we need to resolve, because according to our map, from our surveyor, uh, this is the city of Lakewood's property. It's people of the city of Lakewood's property. Um, I'll take their, uh, attorney at his word that they have evidence. We, we, we just can't resolve something like that here, right? And i- this is, this is gonna end up in negotiations. It may end up in court. Uh, but to move the ball forward, I think, uh, we need to support this ordinance tonight.
Any other comments? Patty, uh, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I couldn't say it any better than the rest of my council members have said. There's a couple of things going on. Definitely equitable space, equitable access. I hear it a lot.
Member Bell has her hand raised.
Can you, I'm sorry, I was, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and equitable access, equitable, using the equity lens, um, giving this, these public lakes, you know, back to the residents. And so I agree with what Councilmember Laura Sella said and how he quoted the numbers on, yes, we're grateful that people came tonight, but there is the entire city of Lakewood. So I want to consider that, but I also want to consider maintaining Edgewater Park, what the mayor said, and keeping up safety and keeping up maintenance of the park. That is paramount to moving forward with this. And I do see this as a tool to move forward to resolution. So I do support this.
Thank you. Well, I will join my colleagues as far as, uh, moving forward for improvement, so I support this ordinance. So with that being said, we have a first and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, we go, okay, we can read that. Okay, it was approved by Councilmember Bokey, second by Councilmember Tarcello. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And the motion passes. So thank you. And moving forward, ordinance number 788, Councilmember, um-
Ordinance number 788, amending chapter 9.06 of the Lakewood Municipal Code relating to controlled substances.
For that, we have our turn, City Attorney Heidi Walker.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss, Mayor Whalen, members of the council, Heidi Walker, City Attorney for the city of Lakewood. Um, I do want to hit a couple of the higher points on this particular ordinance, because there there was some debate about exactly how to adopt this, so I'm gonna walk you through what we did. In the beginning, we had some drug laws on the books. Then there was the Blake case, and we took some drug laws off the books. Then we thought maybe the legislature would help us, and in fact, they had the effect of legalizing drugs, so we made sure that our drug laws that were in violation were off the books. Then there started to be some, um, examples in other jurisdictions about using drugs in public possibly still being a, a way to enforce against drug use. And we adopted a drugs-in-public ordinance. And then the legislature acted again. And what we did at that point, we did some proactive, um, drug laws in the event that the legislature didn't fix what they'd been doing over the years. They haven't backed, in fact, adopted something. What you have before you is a harmonization of laws that we have on our books that remained after all that processing. It includes repealing anything that is in conflict with what the legislature did. And what they did in their legislative enactment was, I sometimes refer to laws as a junk drawer. It's not that the laws that they pass are junk, but they had a little something for a variety of different RCWs. Now, in your city code, you have a section 9.03 that is our junk drawer, for lack of a better word, that shows adoption of a variety of different all kinds of laws all over the place. They're the laws that don't fit anywhere else, and we've adopted the RCW by reference. So the internal debate was, do we take that piece of the controlled substances law that kind of has a little piece of all different RCWs and put that in 903? Or do we do that kind of a section under controlled substances? What we presented to you takes that collection of little pieces of drug laws, and it puts it in the controlled substances section. So what we've done is we've adopted a lot of RCWs by reference, but if someone wanted to find out where Lakewood is on drug laws, they would look under our controlled substances section. They don't have to hop around to sections. So to the degree that that makes sense, I would be happy to try and answer any questions that you have.
Any questions on our attorney, Heidi? I see my, Councilmember Branstadter has his hand up.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Ms. Walker, trying to be to simplify, um, that our city code that was getting ready to become effective one July that would, that had, uh, prohibitions against drug possession and public use and such, that the action that's proposed to us today avoids those ordinances and instead accepts the state provisions about, in those subject areas, even though they differ slightly from what we enacted, feeling they were in the best interests of the community.
Councilmember Branstadter, that is correct. Laws that we previously had on the book are gone. We have adopted what the state did, and when we adopt the RCW by reference, that means that next year, when they change that law again, we are still in good standing because we've adopted the RCW by reference. There is a portion of that state law, and it's literally about 52 pages long, where they talk about complete preemption of the field. And so rather than debate the specifics of exactly what they meant, because it looks like it's targeted at drug paraphernalia, but it may be meant to target more, we just took out everything that was city-born, and we're sticking with what the state's done. And it's not because we agree with the state, it's because the state is basically trying to preempt some areas.
So, what is the impact of us not doing that?
Well, Councilmember Branstadter, to the degree that we are out of sync with state law, I believe that it will depend on what the charge is, but when we're charging city code rather than an adopted-by-reference RCW, we will incur challenges from the defense bar that we are out of line with what we are allowed to do under state law. Sometimes if we're different than state law, we're still operating within our authority. But the way that the state passed this piece of legislation did target our authority to act in, in matters of controlled substances.
And if, uh, in a future legislative section, the state makes other changes, like goes back to what they wanted to have two years ago, by doing it this way of putting it in, adopting whatever the state has now or decides to do in the future, we'd end up going back with no, uh, no other action required on us?
Councilmember Branstadter, that is correct. I would come back before you if something new, different, and like a distinct RCW, different than what you're adopting here, came into play. But if it's within these RCWs, they've been adopted by reference. If they're changed by the state, they're automatically changed for the city.
So is there a way to adopt the RCWs as the state currently has them without leaving the door open for the state to do whatever it wants to in the future? And are just blindly accepting it?
Yes, Councilmember Branstad, what you would do in that instance is you would, instead of adopting by reference, you would copy the language of the RCW. And so you would say, we hereby adopt, and you would plug in the RCW. You could incur challenges from people trying to say that you weren't exactly like the RCW, but if your language matches, you shouldn't have a problem. However, if the state comes back and makes changes, and those changes again inhibit our authority to do anything different, we would have to come back before you and tweak the language again. And my, my feeling about this particular area is that whatever the state does, it's generally going to include that authority over us. I don't see the state backing away from that or making that less in the future.
Good. So, yeah, I understand the state taking, and we'll just use possession and saying that they've, possession is illegal within their parameters that they, they say, and that the, and that while it's a gross misdemeanor, the punishment is different than the standard gross misdemeanor piece. But and that probably we need to go, we sort of tied to that. We tend, certainly our prosecutor and our municipal court would probably have to tie to that. But when this legislature, if they were in the future, were to attach some procedural limits on, on, on how those cases would be processed, such as saying a police officer has to go back to the, the police officer is the one that has to make a referral for drug retention, or that the, the first two offenses are essentially you get a buy on them. You know, is there a way to keep for cases that are going to be tried in municipal court? The punishment's the same as the state, but not be tied to all the procedural things which are perhaps more likely to be tinkered with by the legislature?
Councilmember Branstad, what I would tell you is there's usually a way. And my recommendation, if you're talking about something that might happen in the future, there's nothing preventing you, if you were to adopt everything by reference now, when the state changes one of the laws, for us to scrub that law, figure out what authority we have within the new law, and then come back and make amendments accordingly. We could do it that way. I'm not sure I could recommend passing something tonight based on theories about what the state legislature might do next time around.
Okay, my only concern is that passing something tonight that says we can't react to what the state legislature does in the future, and you're saying that there, there would be avenues open depending upon what they do.
Correct, Councilmember Branstad, depending on what they do. If they clip our wings as far as authority, we may be limited in what we can do.
Okay, that's, that's fine. And Deputy Mayor, I'm certainly willing to support the, the ordinance as presented by the City Attorney.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Can I get a motion to approve your ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ordinance passed, seven eight, ordinance seven eighty-eight.
Aye.
Passed. Thank you. Moving on, are there any unfinished business, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Caulfield?
There's none, Deputy Mayor.
New business?
None this evening, Mayor. Deputy Mayor.
Then moving forward, we will have a report by our City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mayor, good evening, councilmembers. I'd like to call upon our Deputy City Manager Todd Kraus to provide the council an update on our first quarter two thousand twenty-three financial report. Ms. Kraus.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, and councilmembers. So this is the first quarter financial report. It's about one hundred and forty-nine pages. It's been available on the city's website. And this evening, I'm just going to highlight basically from page one hundred and twenty-eight of your packet. And this primarily is focused on the general and street fund. The revenues are exceeding what compared to first quarter of two thousand twenty-two, and it is also exceeding the budgetary estimates for year-to-date. So property tax has increased by seventy-four thousand compared to two thousand twenty-two. And compared to twenty-three year-to-date actuals, it's increased by two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. However, our property tax is going to be what it is going to be based on the limitations. Local sales and use tax is slightly below two thousand twenty-two, but exceeds our budget estimates. Utility tax has increased by sixty-four thousand compared to two thousand twenty-two and one hundred and ten thousand compared to year-to-date budget. And the other significant revenue increase is the state's shared revenues, which increased by seventy-six thousand compared to two thousand twenty-two and seventy thousand compared to the budget estimate, and that primarily is due to high crime. So from our operating revenue standpoint, we're up by three hundred thousand compared to the prior year and just over one million dollars compared to the two thousand twenty-three year-to-date. On the expenditure side, we're up on first quarter compared to two thousand twenty-two actual, but we're slightly under by a million dollars or so compared to the year-to-date. I do want to say that this is still very early. It includes the budget adjustments and that the city council approved. So I'm not anticipating that we're going to proceed necessarily at this rate. Our ending fund balance for our first quarter is sixteen point seven million dollars. So we've met our reserve requirements, the twelve percent. We still maintain the Economic Development Opportunity Fund of two million dollars, and we have left right now nine point two million dollars for the twenty-three and twenty-four budget. If you remember from the carryforward budget adjustment and the adopted budget process, we're required to have a certain level of ending fund balance to carry us over for one-time projects for the following year. And other highlights is the cost recovery for and development services is met, if you look at it over the five-year period. And that cost recovery is on page one sixty-seven of your packet. We're currently at seventy-five percent, and over the five-year period of two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two, it's at ninety-eight percent. And then lastly, from the cost recovery perspective for parks and recreation, over the five-year period of forty-seven percent, and where we are today, year-to-date is forty-four percent. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Kraus.
Councilmember.
Thank you. Do you have any points of concern that we should focus in on any further?
My only caution would be, you know, we are not quite as strong as we were in the prior year. We should take some caution as we're looking at the revenues and expenditures. Expenditures are pretty tight.
Okay. Will we take a more conservative approach to our forecasting going forward because of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Member Pokie?
So, thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss. A couple of questions. One, that it's kind of been a consistent grower over the years, always kind of surprised me on page, I guess it would be one forty-four for you, which the red light, school zone enforcement, way down this year compared to two thousand twenty-two. Is there, is there a reason for that, or just, just happened? Do we know of any technical reason that occurred?
I'm not aware of any reasons. You know, we have seen some fluctuations. The good thing, I guess, if you look at it in the perspective of what the cameras are supposed to do, we should not be receiving as much revenues.
Yeah, I was always surprised that. I mean, I know one's been there for like close to twenty years, and people were still running it. Can you lead us to the real estate excise tax? I don't know what page that starts on.
Sure.
Putting you on the spot there, I'm sorry, but and talk a little bit about the REED and I know it's down, right? But lead us to that page or pages, and then let us know how that's going to, I think we're okay for this year, but impacting us going forward.
Yes, I think we will be fine this year. Sales are not quite as strong as they were. However, the estimates for twenty-three and twenty-four are not quite as high as they were for the actually the past couple of years. So we are still receiving real estate excise. I'm trying to find the page number. If you just give me one second, two and nine?
Two and nine?
Yeah.
So we're, we're still running with budget. We're just, it just doesn't look good year over year because the pressure is so strong. Okay. So no problems this year because we're still?
Yes, compared to where we are from a budgetary perspective, we're fine. We just had some major sales in two thousand twenty-two, and that's what you're seeing in March. We had some major transactions. And those major transactions are included in the packet as well. And that is going to be, we had vacant undeveloped commercial land, and this is on page two hundred and twelve of thirty-three point nine million dollars. We also had general warehousing storage of fifty-four point four million dollars. And then also general warehousing storage on Spring Street. And so those amounts alone are making up that huge amount in March of two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, yeah, I see that. Yeah, those were really large. And the commercial market's off quite a bit. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? No questions or comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, nothing else on my end this evening. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll have a council member comments. Start with Councilmember Pokie.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Real quick, PCRC meeting last, and I'm just pulling up the agenda here. Last Thursday night, there was a presentation on climate change by Dr. Ellie Klaus McGahan. She spoke very highly of Lakewood, and actually Lakewood was one of the cities that she featured in her presentation because that prior week, the Deputy Mayor and I believe Mr. Buwer did a presentation in front of a, of a county group, and it sounds like it went very well. Tiffany Spear did a presentation, our Tiffany Spear gave a presentation on the comprehensive plan update, and she did a very nice job. I think it was very helpful. Remember, the PCRC is made up of a lot of the smaller cities, and so to have somebody of Tiffany's caliber to be for us, working for us is wonderful, but it's nice to share those talents and, and that knowledge with the, the comp, in her specific case was the comprehensive plan update schedule for the two thousand twenty-four comp plan update. Then the housing affordability, HB eleven-ten zoning update from Jason Gauthier, manager of Shape South Sound Housing Affordability Partners. Little tougher discussion because there are so many items in this that and I should probably, we should probably send that out to folks, but you know, we've, we've talked about what the legislature is asking us to do, and actually, I mean, he started talking about, well, here's all the requirements, and then he's talking about parking requirements, and we can no longer require onsite parking if it's within a half mile of transit. So, you know, this becomes very, this is going to be very challenging for us because when some of these things get built with very little parking, and it spills out onto the street, and we don't really have on-street parking, we've never built, really built that capacity in the city. It could be real tough. And so I'm worried. I think a lot of the other members of the PCRC were concerned also. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Councilmember Carrsella?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A few things. First off, I wanted to thank the folks over at St. John's Episcopal Church for inviting members of council to their Juneteenth celebration last night. I had a chance to go, and it was a great experience to, to learn about the history. There was a pastor who spoke about growing up in Louisiana in the sixties during the Civil Rights Movement, and it was very, it was a very powerful presentation that he gave. So I really appreciate the chance that we had to go meet with them after we had made our proclamation declaring Juneteenth a holiday. I went to the farmer's market tonight. It was rainy and a little wet, but there was still a good turnout of folks. People were still excited to be there. There was music, and there's a concert tonight. It was a big drum circle that was going on. We were here, so we weren't able to see that, but I'm sure it was great. I attended the Pierce County Library Board Meeting last week, and in that, they were able to talk a little bit about the Lakewood Library effort and the interim library, and actually have elevation views of the schematics for what the interim library could look like. As I understand, those have been submitted to the city for permitting and are in work. I also was able to attend the Tillican Woodbrook Neighborhood Group on behalf of City Council. Councilmember Branstad was there as well, and it was great to engage with members of our community that I hadn't had a chance to talk to yet, understanding that my parents grew up in that community and being able to connect with folks down there was really cool. Couple of things from tonight's meeting. Talking development as it relates to accessibility on our lakes. I live on one of these street ends for Gravely Lake, as does Mr. Kaufman out here in the audience. He's my neighbor. And I understand the concern of residents of if we develop these street ends into parks and places for people to have access to the lakes, what's the impact on their neighborhoods and people parking and that sort of thing? As a city, that's our job to address that and make sure that it is safe and accessible for everyone. So that's what we're here to do. And then the final thing, all of our council meetings are public and available to folks afterwards to understand what we've discussed, and I encourage folks to go to the City of Lakewood website to access that. The only things that aren't part of that are executive sessions, where we talk about things like ending litigations. So outside of that, everything should be an open book, and folks are welcome to check it out and then reach out to us with any questions. That's it.
Mr. Branstad? Mr. Branstad, a public comment? I mean, Councilmember comments?
I'm good, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to say that I had heard great things about the Juneteenth celebration, and I wish I could have made it. So I look forward to that next year and possibly attending that. And I also wanted to say that I'm just grateful for all who came out and for the public engagement tonight. We are here to listen and to hear, and so I think it's great to have that kind of engagement with the community. Thank you.
Mayor Whalen, you disappeared. Are you there? Mayor Whalen, did you have a public comment? Well, I, if he comes back up, I will go back to him, but I would just echo what I've heard tonight. One of the things I think that our citizens don't understand is that we do not dialogue during public comment time, but we do listen. And I wanted to make that clear for the record that we, we do listen. We just don't respond. We take everything in advisement. Juneteenth, I wanted to attend the event. Unfortunately, I was not feeling well, so I wasn't able to do that. So I missed all the fun. I was able to attend the change of command, uh, on West, and that was last week. That was really good. And I love the watch them information and everything. It's really rewarding to me. And had, we had a tour of Woodbrook, and I was very impressed with the growth that we've seen in there and the changes that have been made. I have been away for a couple of weeks, so I wanted to share with you that uh, I had my high school, uh, my high school was a reunion. And they were really intrigued at the fact that I had gone from the tobacco field in Virginia to the deputy mayor for the city of Lakewood. So we had a lot of conversation, a lot of laughs, a lot of comments. So, um, it was great. It was great. Had a great trip. So, thank you, guys. So Mayor Whalen, are you back? So I don't see he's back there, so.
No, Deputy Mayor, he's left the meeting for this evening.
Okay. So are there any further business? Here are none. I declare this, this meeting is closed. adjourned.